Good morning, everybody. I'll officially call the 1119 2020 Public Safety Meeting to Order. If we could all rise and join. Chief, you have the flag, so if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands.
One nation, one nation, our God.
Our God.
Invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Chief, thank you as always. My daughter walked in once when we were doing that, and she was very impressed that we do the same thing she does at school. All right, I don't, I don't have any public audience comments that were sent to me. Maria, Melissa, anything on our, on the town end? Okay. All right, we all have the beautifully taken minutes from Karen, as always, in our packet. Any questions, comments, material changes for the good of the order? All right, we will let those stand. We have the 2021 regular meeting schedule, I believe. Correct, Maria?
Yes, for the regular meeting schedule, it's just a sample, and I put in sort of our normal quarterly meeting dates. So what we could always do, if the pandemic continues and we want to continue to meet monthly, we could add them as special meetings. Or we could just do a monthly calendar for the, you know, the whole year, anticipating that this might go on sometime.
I'm okay doing the quarterly with the specials as needed, if that's all right with everybody. So again, it's the, it's the January, or is it January do we start?
We have another one scheduled for December.
December, March, yep, okay, that's right. I appreciate that, yeah. I knew we always had one in March because everybody gets to have St. Patrick's Day fun with me. So, all right. And I was remiss, I did not call the roll, but just to make sure that we acknowledge everybody that's here, obviously. Karen, thank you for being here, and congratulations. I understand you have a new role within, within the town. Excited for you, but disappointed as hell. We're not going to get to see you here as often, from what I understand, but we'll. Congratulations on your, your new role at the town.
Thank you.
Melissa Appleby is here. She's got us kicked off. Chief Jim Baldus. Chief, he's here, yep. Michael Berry.
Here.
Michael, Chief Walter.
Yes, good morning.
Deputy Chief Davis.
Morning.
Welcome to your first Public Safety meeting. We're very happy to have you here, sir.
Thank you.
Town manager Maria Capiola.
Morning.
Social services Kristen Formanek. Our champion and hardest worker in the valley right now, Jennifer Kurtanas, how you doing?
I'm hanging in there, please.
Excellent. Mark Crits. Mike Long from the Police Commission. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Melissa Markey. I saw Mark Massaro. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning.
Always good to have you. Sarah Nielsen from AEG.
Good morning.
Morning, Sarah. Chris Peterson, Board of Selectmen.
Morning.
Morning, Chris. We have Tom Roy from Public Works.
Good morning.
Nancy Sheets from Visiting Nurse. Nancy here.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning, Nancy. I believe Karen Stewart has an unexpected conflict at the last second. Do we have Neil Sullivan here? And last, but certainly not least, Gary Wilcox.
I am here. I'm doing a hands-free driving meeting here, so I won't be participating vocally, but I'm hearing by audio.
All right, you guys on the road, my friend. All right, we will jump right into that, or jump right into the meat of the meeting. Jennifer, Farmington Valley Health District, you could lead us off, please.
Sure, so what I was planning on doing was giving you an update on the data. I was asked to specifically talk about the two, two different metrics, the school metrics and the governor's town-level metrics, and then give some updates on some other planning-related activities around vaccine and testing. So, as everyone knows, the entire state is moving in the wrong direction, and the Farmington Valley is no different. We are averaging, at the Farmington Valley Health District, about 90 new cases a week. Simsbury is averaging about 20 new cases a week. For the Farmington Valley, that places our rate per 100,000 at about 12.5 per 100,000. Simsbury is at 10.3 per 100,000. Unlike the peak that we were experiencing in the spring, the majority of our cases now are among members of the general public, whereas in the spring, the majority of our cases were in long-term care and assisted living facilities in our congregate living settings. Knock on wood, our congregate living facilities have been relatively quiet, so all of the cases that we are seeing are truly community-based cases. Our positivity rate is at about 5% for the week ending November 7th, and that's slowly creeping up as well. We, um, so anyway, we're moving in the wrong direction. As you know, we do contact tracing for every single case, and we have a very good response rate, and I want to thank the public for that. The vast majority of our cases still know where they acquired their illness. We have a lot of healthcare workers that test positive. We have family clusters where a family member, more often than not, a parent, traveled, was exposed at work, and the entire family tests positive. And we have had any number of clusters associated with small gatherings. And I want to talk about that again in a little bit. So everything and anything we can do to remind people that this virus is still present, it's present more in our communities than it ever has been, and we cannot get COVID fatigue and think that we can get together on weekends for parties, no mask-wearing, no social distancing, and think that's not going to have an impact is wrong. I was asked to talk about the metrics. So, the State Health Department and the State Department of Ed developed metrics for return to school back just about the time that we were going back to school in September. You gonna pull that up for me? Yeah. So, what it tells us is that this is just a tool to help us consider and work with our schools regarding in-person learning versus more remote learning. Some people have been frustrated by the fact that this has transitioned from a hard line in the sand to a more gradation, a more nuanced type of a tool. And let me tell you why that, I believe, that occurred. When the metrics were first established, we had no idea how COVID was going to behave in schools, how the control strategies that we put in place in schools were going to work, how well kids were going to do with the mask-wearing, et cetera. The Farmington Valley Health District has prioritized working with our schools, and I hope Neil Sullivan may be joining the call, to understand the context in which our community-based cases are occurring. And there's a few things that I can tell you. One, we are not seeing any secondary transmission associated with cases in schools. And what I mean by that is, when we have a confirmed COVID case in a school, be that a student or a faculty member, we work with the school immediately to identify anyone that would have been considered a close contact. Those people are immediately quarantined for the appropriate amount of time, and we track to determine if any of those close contacts subsequently go on to develop disease. And again, we have not been able to identify any situations in which a secondary case has occurred in a school. We also know that the cases that are impacting our schools are occurring because of activities and situations external to the school. So children that are testing positive have been exposed to a family member outside of the school. Faculty members that test positive have been exposed outside of the school. And so that is why, in my opinion, this gradation allows us to assess the circumstances of that 10 per 100,000, or that 25 per 100,000. Right now, I feel that the school situation is probably one of the safest environments for our students. And I do not, at this point, I fully support, to the extent that schools are able to do this, more in-person learning. I don't know if Neil was going to speak to this, but I feel compelled to speak about the situation at Simsbury High School. You may have heard on the news that Simsbury High School is closed for two days, yesterday and today. This is not because of an increased risk associated with being in the school system. This is associated with cases among schoolkids and an external party on a weekend that had the potential to expose other high schoolers, and the time it is taking us to track down those close contacts so we can quarantine them and understand that they will not be in school during their quarantine period. So again, I repeat, this was not about some increased risk in the high school, but rather external activities that have impacted the high school. Neil, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, I really appreciate your comments, Jennifer. You know, certainly, I emphasize the same point that you do, and I've found it remarkable, not knowing what to expect going into this, that, that we truly have not had an instance where we can track a spread of a case within the school environment, that that just simply isn't happening. And, you know, we feel good about that. In terms of these, well, let me first address the, the situation right now at Simsbury High School. You, you missed just by a day, Jennifer. So you said that it was closed yesterday, and today it's actually closed today and tomorrow. So I just want to, I just want to clarify that while the contact tracing is completed. You know, very frustrating to have so many people doing the right things, wearing masks all day long in order to keep school open, and be socially distant, and people working awfully hard, and to have it get closed down over a weekend party that needs to be contact traced is incredibly frustrating. But what we need to do, and we'll, we'll do everything to keep people safe. In, in terms of these metrics that you have put up and where we are compared to Ardford County and the state, so obviously, they've gone up, and while they approached that first marker of potentially more hybrid learning of the 10 cases per 100,000, I would note that because the high school is the most complicated place, and we are in hybrid there already, we feel very good about where we are K-8 in terms of identifying these cases, you know, contact tracing them accurately, and getting the people into quarantine that need to be into quarantine. That is a process that has gone extraordinarily well at the elementary school. And it's gone very, it usually involves more kids and teachers at a middle school case, and yet we can contain it because of the, the teaming process that we have to cohort kids. So, we always knew the high school was going to be the most complicated, and it's proven to be that, although the, the number of actual cases at the, at the high school that have required quarantine is less than a handful. So, I appreciate your comments. You've been tremendous in partnering with us on this, and, you know, every day that we can keep these schools open, we're going to work to do that.
Yeah.
A question for you, with respects to the, the incident from the prior weekend for Jennifer and Neil, where there was upwards, I believe, of 40 high school kids all congregating together at a house. Are we pursuing this from a criminal side? Given that there, there's rumors running around that one of the members of the household had tested positive for COVID and potentially was aware of it, potentially exposing the others to it, and additionally, an unsupervised party amongst a high volume of high school kids is something that shouldn't have happened.
Well, I think retro, look. I hope that we all can continue to learn from these types of episodes and in all of our different forums, communicate with family members, neighbors, et cetera, the impact of this. Not only is this likely to impact, you know, 20, 40 students and prohibit them from participating in in-person learning, it is likely to potentially, or maybe has impacted some businesses where people work. So, I just think we need to absolutely circle back in all of our forums, and then proactively, if we learn about these things, if we hear that they're happening, then we need to make the call and go in and tell them that it is unacceptable. I, you know, I've, I'm, we also need the public's cooperation. We cannot be vilifying people because what we've seen in this circumstance is people shut down and won't communicate and won't share the close contacts. So we have to avoid a situation in which that is happening as well, because that gets us nowhere. We need people to cooperate. So, I think in this instance, we move forward. We hope that we have made our point with the family members that have been involved, and we all, as a community, have to be vigilant, step up, and tell people to do the right thing.
And I can, I can appreciate that. Unfortunately, and I don't, they may just be rumors, but the rumors that are tied to this event are that an individual in the house knew they were COVID-positive, and they still had this event, which to me feels very different than an oops, we made a mistake and had people together. Now, I'm not in a position to know that information, and I don't want to confirm people's health diagnoses here.
Yeah.
But to me, that's negligence, and that's beyond oops, we had a party. That's intentionally exposing others in a community, and they damn well should have known better. And I have a substantial issue with that, and I think this community does as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's very concerning. I just, I don't know what people don't understand.
Jennifer, hey, good morning, Chris Peterson. If I go back, if I go back, and Sean and I and the rest of the team get almost daily Corona emails from Maria, which is incredibly helpful, I almost open them up with like a little bit of trepidation, go, oh goodness, what's the number today, scenario, and what's impacted? But if I, if I go back in my memory, it would seem that September, and I don't know who can comment to this, but you can do it almost anecdotally, Maria or Jennifer, it seemed like September was the last time we were sort of sub-two per 100,000. Does that sound about right? Is that possible?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so if, you know, as a person who looks at forecasting almost every single day and lives in a world of statistics, and, and I think about multiplication right here, so if we've got, if we bumped around for four months, if we bumped around two as the high, and then in 60 days, we went from two to 10. And we know, and let's just, for all of our good work, let's just say that nobody's behavior gets any better. It just stays as, as is. So when you're doing your modeling, statistical modeling, if it took us, it's a pure number of multiplication. If it took us 60 days to go from two to 10, what's the acceleration factor for us to go from 10 to 20 here? What do, what do you guys say? Is it two, is it five days, 10 days, 30 days? Can you give us some perspective so we can get some planning, I'm sure, from, from some other considerations that we have to do here in town?
Yeah, well, for the past month and a half, our community cases by week have increased by about five to 10 cases a week. So if you follow that same, so September, early October, we were relatively stable. October, we saw the big jump, a fairly big jump with almost a tripling of cases from October 3rd to October 10th. Since October 10th, we've increased our cases on average five to eight cases a week. So for argument's sake, let's make that 10. So, you know, I don't know what your benchmark is, but we're at about nine, you know, 85 cases. So, you know, a couple weeks, and we're up, you know, we're up two weeks, and we're up over 100.
So Neil, this is, thank you then. So Neil, this is to you, in understanding that the, 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 the slide, I'll call it the slide rule that we're looking at there relative to learning, approach to learning, is, and everything is fluid, is there someplace where it says that the 20, is the 25 number truly a hard number?
No.
Remote, or is it, can that still be fluid as well above 25?
It's, it's still, it's still fluid, and it goes back to, you know, the context in which these cases are occurring. These numbers represent community cases, so our entire community. They don't represent the school system. I would argue that our rate per 100 in the school systems is, you know, very, very low, far below 10. So even at the 25 cases per 100,000, I think we're still looking at the context. Where are these cases occurring? Who are they impacting?
Sure, okay, good, because I think, again, this is, the more we talk, the more we add clarity to this type of conversation, it's important because, there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of self-interpre tation, myself probably leading part of the charge there, so I appreciate that.
And Chris, these are, these are great questions, and I also like to flip it in reverse. You know, we don't want to be held solely to a number because there's also circumstances in which we might need to make a decision in a school when our numbers are below 10 per 100,000. For instance, if a school system no longer has the staff to safely fulfill their mission because they're out on quarantine, then a school might need to go to distance learning for a period of time. And that has nothing to do with a 10 per 100,000 or a 25 per 100,000. There may be situations in which we absolutely identify a cluster in a classroom or secondary transmission, or multiple cases in an environment where we can't trace it back to a common source or some explanation. The rate may be lower than 10 per 100,000, but we may say the context of that suggests that we need to stop and take pause. The circumstance that we're dealing with at the high school, again, another circumstance in which we felt it was important to just put a pause so that we could do the contact tracing and really wrap our head around who needs to be quarantined. So it works both ways. So it's both looking at the numbers, having that as a basic framework, understanding the context, and the schools knowing that they need to be nimble enough to make adjustments on a minute's notice or a day's notice based on specific circumstances.
Right, and I would just add to that, that, that very example that Jennifer brought up, brought out about a particular cohort, or, I mean, it was not as widespread because, in terms of us putting the news out, but we did close our preschool operation for, until Thanksgiving, three unrelated cases, all adults, no preschoolers themselves, as we made the decision to close down that program for six days, three, the remaining three of this week, and then three for next week. And it was about being able to staff it safely because we had so many people on quarantine. And quite frankly, I think we may, if we do have to close, I, I believe it'll be a staffing concern before it's a metric concern.
Cool, cool. And, you know, Neil, that, I, one, one other thought that has come up, just, the, the inability for, and this is, this is not a, this is not a judgment, but the inability to, for, for the sub, for the K through six kids to not go on a daily basis for distance learning, I think maybe we should start looking, I'd hope you guys would start looking at that, and for the team on the phone, we have the ability for 7th through 12th graders whom have a sick day, so to speak, to go instantly into daily learning, daily virtual. And I'll just give you an example, my daughter was playing at a private club team. She's an eighth grader. She came in contact with someone on the team that possibly was from a different school, was possibly sick. We waited for the results back. We went and got her own test results for my daughter because I didn't want to get torched in social media, being the person that sent their kid to school. And we took her out of school for two days while those results came back, it came back negative, but she was able to just jump into distance learning, even though she's not a distance learning cohort. My, my kid, my sons, I've got three, three boys who are in the sixth grade level. They just got taken out of school for what were considered sick days, but they weren't sick, but we're trying to be responsible parents. And I just think, Neil, as the season goes on and more and more kids are either having, there's a down day or a flu day or a question day, and parents are trying to be responsible and be good citizens to the rest of our town, the ability to open up daily distance learning for elementary school, so they don't, I've gotten many of those nine-day notes because we go skiing, I didn't say that in public. But the, you know, I don't want to get those because we're trying to be responsible, and I don't want my kids to fall behind. So possibly opening up daily distance learning for elementary as best you can, I think is, is another value add to our community.
Yeah, and we're, we're in those discussions right now, Chris. I think we maybe got the situation in September, October, maybe gave us a false read on how many people might end up in quarantine needing that kind of distance learning at the elementary level. So we're, we're talking with our teachers' union, and, and our squadron line cases have certainly caused us to rethink our position on that, so more to come on that.
Super, thank you, guys. I'm done for the day. Sermon's over, Sean.
Oh, good, my friend. I was ranting about locking people up for being stupid, so you got us back on track.
I just have a couple other quick updates, unless people have other questions. I have been working with the governor's office to increase access to testing throughout the Farmington Valley. I have shared with all of our town managers for selectmen, we do have a standing test site open at Tonxus Community College on Thursdays. I believe the hours are 11 to 3. We also will be sending out some information, but Bradley Airport testing is now going to be available to the general public, not just travelers. So I will be sending out some correspondence so we can promote that. I think that's a daily, seven days a week operation, so that's an area where we can send individuals. And I am also working to identify a site on the northwestern part of the Farmington Valley. So I think with these three standing test sites available, there'll be relative access for our community members seeking testing. I'm also very interested in seeing if we can increase access to rapid to rapid testing specifically for school systems, for symptomatic faculty and staff. Um, we know that there are limitations to the rapid test, but in a symptomatic individual, that rapid test, if that test is positive, we can in a more timely way work with schools to do the contact tracing and quarantining if necessary. So that's something we're working on. Um, obviously, you're all aware that, uh, vaccine availability is, um, getting closer. Um, we have a number of vaccines that are, um, getting ready to, uh, get FDA approval for emergency youth authorization. Um, we have been, you know, practicing and developing our mass vaccination plans for many, many years. The first phase will likely be very stealth, closed environment, uh, vaccine distribution for first responders and critical infrastructure. Um, our emergency managers should have received an email from Melissa. I believe yesterday, we're starting to identify appropriate locations for that vaccination process to take place. Um, so I just wanted to, one, encourage our emergency managers to give that some thought and respond to the survey, um, and let you know that that's something that we're gearing up to do when we have access to vaccine. Um, I think that's it for me, unless you have questions.
Appreciate that. Additional questions for Jennifer? Mike?
Uh, Jennifer, Bradley, uh, Heartland Healthcare is going to run that testing site at Bradley, which will open next Monday.
Yep, yep.
So, but not in terminal, uh, testing, not usually the word terminal in a cynical way. Uh, but it is a drive-through, uh, but it won't be open until Monday. So, uh, then it should be very effective and very useful.
Great, yep.
Appreciate that, Mike, thank you. Yeah, I was wondering the logistics of bringing people into the airport, so it is drive-through, okay. Appreciate that. Uh, and Jennifer, I could just echo that from personal experience and otherwise, that there does seem to be a gap in understanding of where folks can get testing, the, the facilities that we are, uh, going to, won't do same-day testing, et cetera. So, um, it, it, it has grown frustrating for folks that are trying to do the right thing and proactively get their kids tested. But again, we're, we're looking at, you know, three to five days out of school while we wait, plus the day before. So, you know, anything we can do to help folks get, um, answers, I think will continue to help us with, with doing the right thing to make sure that we're protecting each other's children and, and family members from, from further exposure. So appreciate that.
Sean, this is Jim Baldas. Could I ask Jennifer a quick question?
Of course, chief.
Uh, Jennifer, I know that, uh, as far as testing goes, there's a number of different tests that are out there. And I believe that it requires the actual PCR test, uh, in order to validate yourself in regards to, uh, quarantine or back to school or back to work type of situations. Is that correct?
So CDC and the state, and we do not necessarily require or recommend testing for return back. The recommendation is a symptom and time-based clearance strategy. And this is based on studies that CDC has done that look at the extent to which people who have tested positive, uh, for COVID are infect, you know, the period of time that they're considered infectious. So for an individual that tests positive, they, if they are not hospitalized or don't have a severe case of the illness, they are no longer considered infectious ten days either after their onset of symptoms or ten days from their positive test if they're symptom-free, assuming that their symptoms are improving for the symptomatic individuals and they've been twenty-four hours fever-free. Um, there are individuals that will continue to test positive even after they are no longer considered infectious. That doesn't mean they can spread the virus. It just means they have sufficient viral load to still test positive on a PCR. So, um, there are some employers that are requiring a test-based strategy for clearance, but for the majority of people, it's a symptom and time-based clearance.
Okay, thanks for that. And I guess maybe just as a clarification then, for those people that are suspected, they get tested and the test is negative. Again, it's the PCR test that then is required versus, uh, some of the other tests that may be out there?
Yes, uh, the, if, if someone is symptomatic, we always encourage them to first access a rapid test because then they will quickly, if they test positive, it provides us more timely information upon which to take action for quarantine. If they're symptomatic and they test negative on a rapid, we ask them to immediately get the PCR test, which is a more sensitive test. Um, most places, a lot of our urgent care centers and things are doing just that. They'll do the rapid, if it's positive, assume it's positive, you're positive, be on your way and go isolate. If it's negative and you're symptomatic, a PCR will be done and they'll be sent home and told to isolate until such time as their test result comes back.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys. Obviously, a lot of information, a lot to consume. Uh, but I, I think the summary is, and, and, and you guys, uh, Jennifer and Neil, did a great job. The schools continue to be a safe place. Um, you have a very good handle on where the cases are generated from. And I think that's an important distinction from the spring, um, where, um, we weren't, uh, we weren't as prepared to do the contact tracing side as we were learning what this virus was and how it worked. Um, and there's a high degree of confidence at this point that the schools continue to be a safe place. But if and when that changes, um, you're in a position to make that decision in minutes and hours, um, to make sure that the community stays safe. So I appreciate all that. Um, I, again, I know there was a lot there to digest, but I feel like that was a, the, the, the important summary for the folks that might be listening at home. Your kids are safe when they go to school. Um, so appreciate that. Uh, additional questions before we move on to the town manager? Jennifer, thank you for all your work. Maria, the floor is yours.
All right, great, thank you. And thanks, Jennifer, for that update. It was very, very helpful. Um, so I think in our last meeting, we spoke about the fact that DPH had launched the municipal COVID alert system. So that is something that we continue to, to monitor and to track. Um, it sounds like from the data that, that Jennifer shared, um, will most likely be going from yellow to, to orange status in terms of the severity and the color coding. Uh, red is the most, uh, severe in terms of cases per hundred thousand. So again, that is something that we continue to monitor. Uh, we had been regularly, uh, monitoring the travel advisory as well. Uh, we've been doing our best to try and push out information about that weekly, um, not only to our workforce, but the wider community to continue to raise awareness about the importance of adhering to that, completing the form when you do return from travel, um, that the state is requiring, et cetera. Um, we have been seeing an uptick in, um, enforcement of sector rules cases over the last two weeks or so. Um, for the most part, we had been fortunate and, and our staff had not received, um, uh, really any complaints at all um, for most of the pandemic. And over the last few weeks, uh, we have seen an uptick of, uh, complaints about, um, you know, businesses in mask-wearing, other potential violations. And so I really want to thank Jennifer and her team. Um, they've been really great to work with. Our planning staff, for the most part, has been taking the lead, um, on our end and, and investigating, um, those concerns and complaints. And I think that our staff, along with Jennifer's team, have been doing a really good job of trying to balance education and compliance with enforcement. Um, but again, that is something that we have seen a recent uptick in. Uh, in general, our workforce is largely remaining healthy. Um, what we've also seen an uptick in, however, in the last two to three weeks is the number of our staff members who are being quarantined due to contact tracing, um, because they have come into contact with somebody that did, uh, close contact with somebody that did pass, test positive for COVID. Um, in the last few weeks, um, I believe we've had upwards of twenty staff members, um, that have been quarantined uh, by various, um, or recommended to be quarantined by various health districts. Um, at this point, we are holding steady for our very limited walk-in hours at town hall and the library. As you know, for folks who have visited our buildings, um, we do have some pretty significant modifications when you do visit the building. Uh, we are, again, continuing to monitor, um, the, the situation. Uh, we're, again, hoping to hold steady for those very limited hours, but if things do continue to worsen, um, we may need to roll back some of those, those walk-in hours. Um, our ice rink is now open for the season, uh, again, with modified practices. Um, we did send out some communication, uh, last week that the ice rink, uh, we did have a delayed opening. Um, and again, that was due to a large number of our, um, staff members unfortunately having to be quarantined. Um, the senior center will remain closed until further notice. Um, we continue to have very limited services there. Um, and when we get to, um, Kristen's portion of the agenda, I would hope that she would be able to speak to, um, the re, um, recent information we did receive from the health district regarding senior centers and services being provided by them. We did, uh, process a large number of absentee ballots as anticipated, um, due to folks being able to vote by absentee because of the pandemic. Uh, in a normal presidential election, we would process about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred absentee ballots. Um, this, our recent election, forty-four percent of all votes cast were done so by absentee ballot. And we had a little over seventy-two hundred people cast their votes by A B. Uh, just a quick reminder that our no cash payments has been extended through January first. Um, we are accepting payments by check, credit cards and debit cards and are encouraging folks, when possible, to do online transactions with us. And again, given the current, um, state of the pandemic, we are continuing to hold our meetings virtually until further notice. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for the town manager? All right, Michael Berry, emergency management, sir.
Well, uh, we've had quite a meeting so far. Um, I'm not going to, uh, reiterate a lot of what has already been said, uh, because a lot of the things roll over into my category. Um, emergency management has been very busy, but also standing by. Uh, because nothing is really going on that we need to take direct action on at this point. Uh, mercy management has been on the weekly meetings with the Department of Public Health and also, uh, the bi-weekly, bi-weekly meetings with the governor. We're keeping tabs on everything that's happening and going on. Uh, we have been in the meetings with the vaccines, uh, that might be coming out in the future. Mercy management has identified locations in the town and we're notifying, uh, Department of Public Health of the locations that we can do, uh, the vaccinations if possible. Uh, we did have in September, we had a flu clinic, uh, that we did and it worked out very well and it was also a dry run. So when the vaccine does come out, we should be able to, uh, dispense those to the public, uh, very smoothly with little traffic difficulty and, uh, with little, uh, little problems, we hope. Uh, we continue to put out a weekly incident action plan, uh, dealing with the COVID and, uh, best practices for municipal employees of what we're doing. It is very good that we do see a very low amount of cases, uh, in the central Connecticut region where I'm down. Uh, we are seeing a large uptick, uh, in our municipality as well as, uh, departments. Uh, contact tracing is going through, lots of people are quarantining and, you know, as we can keep out of that, uh, as much as possible, you know, we'd like to try to do that. So we're encouraging everybody to follow best practices, uh, keep up your vigilance, you know, wash your hands, wear your masks as much as possible, uh, because it can, once it gets in, it's, uh, really spreads like wildfire. And we're, we're seeing that all over. Um, we have had quite a bit of wild weather, uh, with the windstorms. Everybody's been experiencing that. Uh, we have had good contact with Eversource. Prior to any event that comes in, Eversource has been in contact with us, letting us know what they, uh, what they're ramping up for, what strategies they're doing and keeping in contact as the storms hit and then follow up after the storms for the recovery. So, uh, that has been working very well. WSIM, the radio station, uh, encourage everybody to listen to one oh three point five. We continue to pump out information, uh, related to everything that we've talked about in this meeting and, uh, all other agencies. If you have any information that you need to get out to the public, uh, continue to let us know so we can make up spots, put them in rotation and continue to inform the public, uh, to the best of our ability. So, and that's what I have for emergency management at this point because again, a lot of what I have, uh, has already been said or will be said by other agencies in this meeting.
Excellent, Mike, thank you. Questions for Mike? Strong.
Just, uh, could you repeat the, uh, the radio, uh, call signal there, the, the station?
Yes, WSIM one oh three point five on the FM dial.
Thank you.
And you can either get it by, uh, regular radio and, but we also have a streaming service. If you can't pick it up, uh, from where your location is, you can, uh, get it online on the computer.
I'm told, I'm told there's yacht rock from ten to two and a little, uh, Kowalski hour, uh, you know, in there from time to time. So it's a, it's a, it's an excellent, uh, it's an excellent alternative to the hustle and bustle of life, but also good for getting information out.
It is a fantastic radio station and, uh, the volunteers that have been working have been doing an excellent job. The music is something where you never know what's going to come on next. So it's, it's, that's one thing you listen to is just, just to see what's going to come next, so.
True, much like a board of selection meeting, you never know what's going to happen. So, excellent, all right. Appreciate that. Uh, chief? How is our police department?
Good, thank you, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, real brief report unless there are any, any questions or follow-ups. Uh, but for those who, of you who have not been introduced, um, Chris Davis has joined us as the deputy police chief for the department. And if you were not able to, um, view his ceremony last week, then you can see it on SCTV or there's a link on our Facebook page at, uh, Simsbury CT Police Department. Um, it'll link you right to SCTV to view that. Um, and then the only other thing that I wanted to report on, uh, is basically a follow-up to what the town manager had mentioned about members on quarantine. Overall, staffing is, is good at the police department. Uh, we did have an increase like we have seen throughout, um, the townwide organization. Um, and we've had several officers who have been quarantined, um, based on that contact tracing efforts, not on, uh, symptoms, but on the contact tracing. Uh, and we're, um, just dealing with that and seeing how we can, uh, sort of minimize those exposures in the future. That's all I have.
Appreciate that. Any questions for the chief? And again, deputy chief Davis, uh, welcome. It was, uh, it was great to meet you and your family, uh, in person. Uh, I was able to attend the ceremony, as was, uh, Mike Long, Maria, uh, Chief Bolter. Um, and that was, uh, that was streamed on SCTV. So, um, wish, wish it could have been more of our, our normal, uh, normal, uh, welcome, but, uh, we are very excited to have you in the community. And as we talked about, and I thought, uh, Mike, you did a particularly great job of articulating, uh, the, the, the proud community policing that our department has and, and that we think you'll, you'll be a very strong and welcome addition, uh, to the, to the, um, to the wonderful job our officers do today. So, uh, thank you for joining us and, uh, anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, I'm taking it in, I, I really appreciate the, uh, warm welcome. It was nice having, uh, you all there at the, at the, uh, the ceremony. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Uh, we will move on. Uh, Karen is not with us, so we do not have an ambulance update. Uh, we move on to fire. Uh, chief Baldas.
Hi, good morning and, uh, Chris, welcome again. Unfortunately, an ill-timed fire alarm prevented, uh, me from watching the streaming service, so we will have a chance to meet, I'm sure, in a very near future time, but, but certainly welcome. Uh, and, uh, we'll be looking forward to a great relationship. From the, um, fire department perspective, uh, we continue to remain, knock on wood, COVID-free. Uh, we certainly, uh, share the concerns that Jennifer, I think, expressed in the fact that the uptick seems to be more community-related. And, uh, to that end, uh, we are actually working back towards going to more remote, uh, uh, training. Um, as we get into the holiday months, uh, we, we tend to do more classroom-type of, of activities anyway. So the department is already setting up its schedule to, uh, do more things, uh, using our, our teams and Zoom-type of communication with our membership and go over training programs in a remote setting and limiting the, uh, the contact, uh, that the members have, not only just with each other, but, but certainly just in general. So, um, hopefully that will continue to create positive results as we have seen, uh, in keeping ourselves, uh, COVID-free and without any issues in regards to our ability to respond. Um, on some very positive notes, as I think the word is getting out and, and certainly pass it along, uh, to, to friends and neighbors. Simsbury celebrates is, is alive and well, but certainly in a little different format this year. Uh, the fire company will be doing, uh, our traditional torchlight parade, but with a little bit of a different spin. Uh, Iron Horse Boulevard, uh, on the northbound side will be, uh, will be closed and all of our fire apparatus will Iron Horse Boulevard on the northbound side will be, will be closed, and all of our fire apparatus will be in a stationary mode, lined up and decorated for our friends and citizens to watch the parade from their own vehicles as they drive by. And they will be using the southbound lane entering from Hot Meadow Street at the intersection of Owens Brook, and driving down south to exit at Drake Hill Road, and that'll take place from five o'clock P M to seven P M, a little bit longer if we need to, but certainly we're really, really happy to be able to provide this little bit of joy to the town at a time when, when I know a lot of people are pretty anxious about what's going on. So we're very happy to hear about that. And certainly, there's a lot of other Simsbury Celebrate events that are taking place virtually as well. And I know that can be found on the Simsbury Town's website to get more information about those activities also. As we head into the holidays, it's certainly a reminder, I think, especially nowadays, maybe more so than ever, as our public is staying home, doing a lot more, you know, close-family type of activities at being home. We, we tend to think that we may see more issues in regards to uses of fireplace, uses of candles, more, maybe even more Christmas decorations or holiday decorations. And we want to make sure that our public is very mindful of being fire-safe, continue to check your smoke detectors to make sure that they're working. Don't overload your circus with, with holiday lights. If you plan to use your chimney and haven't used it in a while, make sure it gets inspected and cleaned. If you do use your fireplace and have any issues, certainly, you know, we are here to respond if you have any problems. But we want to make sure that everybody stays, you know, certainly safe during this holiday period of time. And with that, Sean, I think that's it for today.
That's a good reminder. Open your flu before you light the fire, please.
Yeah, that always helps.
Yep, it's, it seems like an obvious step, but I'm sure many forgot. I've, of course, never done that, but but yeah. All right, I appreciate that, and I am looking forward to the fire truck parade, as is my five-year-old. Chief, you're right, it's, it's a, it's a welcome thing to have some sense of normalcy, and have the volunteers in the department still be willing to do that. So thank you, thank you for keeping that going.
Absolutely.
You know, with so many traditions changed and everything else, it's, it's nice to be able to count on things like that. Neil, we went through a pretty substantial update before, but additional comments from the Board of Education side?
No, thanks, Sean. I'll keep it very brief, based on being able to talk earlier. The only other thing I wanted to mention for people that really want to drill down to the data for the school system is that we have added a dashboard related to COVID cases and quarantines by school to our webpage. So if you go to our website and click on the COVID-related information, you'll be able to get to this dashboard that can tell you, week by week, exactly where your school stands in terms of having any cases or folks who are on quarantine, and wanted to be very transparent with that information. So that is updated every Friday, and I think it's been out there for about two weeks, but we want to make sure that people who are interested to stay informed can do so on a school-by-school basis. So wanted to just add that, and with, otherwise, I will leave it there.
Appreciate it, Neil, thank you. Mr. Roy, Public Works.
Thank you, Sean. As I think we've been going through interesting times, we have a few staff members on quarantine. We've been very fortunate, knock on wood, that we've not had any direct cases at this point. We are continuing to kind of redouble our efforts in terms of P P E and proper social distancing. We had an interesting start to the month, and kind of to echo Mike Berry's comments that Eversource was absolutely excellent in their response to our November second windstorm. We, we were seeing trees falling in town at a similar rate to what we had seen during the tropical storm. But the cleanup and restoration efforts on their part was absolutely excellent, and I think by late afternoon, everybody was backed up and running, so I really do appreciate that effort. And then the other big one is as we're coming into winter, and anybody who stepped out of their house this morning realized that winter is definitely coming.
Yes.
We have been working, first off, with Farmington Valley Health, and I need to thank them for their work in approving a quarantine procedure for us, which in the event, just as we're sitting here now, we have several drivers on quarantine that are showing no symptoms. In the event that we were to have a significant snow event and we need to bring them in, we've come up with a procedure that's been approved that would allow them to essentially quarantine within their trucks. They would have separate restroom facilities, any food or drink or anything else that they need to keep themselves going would be put on a table in a bag, we'd be able to pick it up. And that's going to be really helpful in making sure we can achieve our objective of keeping the roads clear so that all of our residents will be afforded the police, fire, and ambulance services during a snow event. We've also coordinated with all of our surrounding towns to just kind of reaffirm our mutual aid agreements. If it may be a case that we may send one of our trucks into Granby if need be, or vice versa. We've also been coordinating that if they have some additional staff that may have training, they may send their staff members over to utilize some of our equipment if need be. We're also going to be relying on our other Public Works divisions to help the Highway Division, so we will be looking at W P C A staff, have the skills to come in, and either drive, if they have experience in C D L, they would drive one of our big trucks. If not, they would be supplementing pickups. And I think that's going to be a big part of our operation. We may end up, we're very careful about who we're going to put into a big truck during the snowstorm, but we have a lot of pickup trucks that can supplement the operation and keep us at a safe level within our roads. If, if we can't keep up the needs with our additional staff from our other divisions within town, we also have some on-call agreements with a number of our local contractors to bring in their own equipment. And we have been working a little bit with Jim Baldus in the Fire District. If we work our way all the way down to that list, and we're truly in an emergency situation, we'll have the ability to bring in some of the fire department staff if need be. Hoping we don't get that far down the list, but we're just kind of planning for the absolute worst-case scenario.
Appreciate that, Tom. Yeah, and again, don't want folks to be concerned, but we have a history of planning for exactly what you just articulated in this community, so thank you for doing that, and, and let's, let's never hopefully have to use it, but heaven forbid, we're in good shape, so. Appreciate you, you taking care of those details.
We haven't quite put you on the list yet, Sean, but.
Tree cutting, you definitely should, but no plowing, I'm not sure, not sure I'm qualified. All right, questions for Mr. Roy? Again, Tom, thank you to you and your department for all your hard work. Social Services, has Kristen joined us?
Okay.
Hear me?
Oh, there you are. Hi, Kristen.
You're here all along, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I, I think that it's a good time to remember that we're, we're not stuck at home, we're safe at home. And as Maria already shared, we've had some changes to our programming that occurred yesterday. We did receive communication from the Health District to stop in-person activities. And while we were not open, later in the summer, we had opened up some of our health services. We were offering foot care, hearing clinics, and blood pressure and blood sugar screening. So effective today, those are canceled moving forward until it's safe to weekly Wednesday. Very happy that yesterday we were able to provide them with a nice Thanksgiving meal for that. We continue to.
Kristen, we're losing you. You're coming in and out. Still there?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you, you're there for a minute, and then you kind of, you fade out, and then you come back.
Oh, I apologize. I think it's my Wi-Fi. If you, if you can't hear me, let me know, but I made a change, so let me try to continue. My apologies. So we, we have stopped producing masks because we have an excess in our collection. We do still have plenty for the community, so if anybody needs them, please let me know. One of our biggest changes for Social Services, as most people know, we, we've been doing drive-through distribution for our Cheese Day, and we switched to this month so that we could be indoors for the winter months. We were concerned about staff being outside and volunteers, as well as concerns for our product getting ruined if it was inclement weather. So we're now distributing through a walk-up, walk-up-to-the-door distribution method. We've got some great partners for volunteers. This is an all-day event rather than just two hours, so it's a, it's a little bit of a bigger lift for myself and my staff. But our first distribution went really well. We've got a lot of good feedback, so we're going to continue with that. I also just want to take a moment to remind people that it is energy assistance season. So if you need help with your heating costs, please contact my office. We are taking applications now. It's a little bit different. We're doing everything remotely, but we are able to get you the help that you need. And we are also actively seeking sponsors for our holiday program. We still have a few families that we would like to get adopted. So if you'd like to give us a hand with that, please contact me, and we would really appreciate your help. And just one last note, as, as was already mentioned, we're looking forward to greeting our new Social Services Assistant on Monday. We're really excited, and we will now have a complete full team again. And we also currently are all healthy and do not have any quarantine staff. So thank you, and, and I'll be here if anybody has any questions.
Kristen, thank you, and I know you have a lot of balls in the air, particularly at this time of year, and especially being short-staffed, so well done on keeping everything going, and thank you for that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Any questions for Kristen? All right, Nancy V N A.
Morning, good to be here. I am grateful to say that we are obviously taking care of COVID patients. Everybody here at the staff at the V N A is safe. We haven't had to quarantine anybody. We are mandated for weekly testing. It's a challenge sometimes to get that done, but we do get it done. You know, we struggle, unfortunately. We're kind of, maybe as a healthcare provider, which I understand, but also struggle with. Department of Public Health for Connecticut has different rules for us, so regardless of negative testing, if there's exposure, they want us now to quarantine for fourteen days, which poses a lot of difficulty for us, but we're still meeting everybody's needs. And, you know, the only thing I could share is that if anybody knows of businesses or groups or families or just random people that haven't gotten a flu shot yet, we do still have vaccine left over. It gets shipped back to the companies within, I think, a month. So, you know, before we get rid of it, if anybody else needs anything, we could be flexible, we could stay openly, we could come to you. We could go to people's homes. Please just let me know. Otherwise, we're here if anybody needs additional assistance. You know, or you're concerned about people out in the community, we do have a number of nurses that are now not working because they're not doing blood pressure clinics. Some of our Granby schools are already closing down, so we have extra staff that can help out in different ways. So please let me know if you have any needs.
Nancy, thank you for that. Really appreciate it. Once again, your, your organization does phenomenal things for our community, so appreciate, appreciate that offer. Get your flu shot if you haven't gotten it, please. All right, Sarah Nielsen, how are our businesses, my friend?
Businesses are very worried right now. I will tell you that the restaurants especially are worried about a shutdown from the state before next week and before Thanksgiving. And so, you know, just a reminder to everyone that's watching that all of our restaurants offer takeout options. So especially if you don't feel safe dining in, there are takeout options for everyone. There's also delivery and curbside pickup for many, so there's still a lot of safe ways to help the restaurant community and not have to cook and, and be safe. With the numbers skyrocketing, or not skyrocketing, but with the numbers increasing, we've been switching to handing out K N ninety-fives to the business owners and to their employees. Main Street has especially been focused on the essential businesses, because as, as one knows, making sure that you have healthy staff in order to, you know, keep moving groceries and all the other things are essential. And so this week, I've been doing my in-store visits, especially for the Shop Simsbury event happening next Friday and Saturday. I will visit more than forty stores by the time Friday hits. I've handed out already more than a thousand K N ninety-fives. We do say, we do get, Main Street does get in some donated N ninety-fives, which we've been giving to the Volunteer Ambulance Association. And so, you know, she's, I just saw Karen yesterday to do a swap. So we're giving the N ninety-fives to the essential workers, and we're using the K N ninety-fives for the businesses. I can't believe I have to say this, but one final thing, as Maria mentioned, both Mike and I have been working very closely with the Health District, especially Jason Brown, when it comes to business issues. And just a reminder, I've seen a huge uptick in reporting from business owners that people have been verbally assaulting and yelling at either themselves and/or their employees. And just a reminder, as we move into a busier season, Thanksgiving and Christmas, that if something is, you know, these businesses are doing the very best they can, they, like all of us, have limited staff, some are on quarantine, limited resources. And so if there's an issue, there are definitely ways to report or sort out or handle the issue, but verbally assaulting employees and owners is not that way. And we're seeing a huge uptick in that at retail and restaurants.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that should not be, and as we talked about in the spring, and as you articulated, a lot of businesses and restaurants have, have the, the number to call if they, if individuals believe there's a violation, they should be utilizing that service. We should not be self-policing each other or, or businesses. That is not our individual purview.
Yep, and the final thing is, again, I, I think that the Health District has been phenomenal in fielding a lot of these complaints. And make sure that it's not, that, that it's serious and that it's valid, because we, the public should not be wasting anyone's very limited resources on tiny things or things that are personal in nature or other stuff. And not to say, you know, again, it's, we take it very seriously. The Health District takes it very seriously. But let's not exercise pettiness and some craziness that we're seeing happen in the business community.
Agreed. All right.
Sean, can I just add something?
Of course.
Sarah's report reminded me, I'm, I'm quite remiss. I think I've said this in the past, but it bears repeating. I just want to give a real positive shout-out to the Fire Department of our town. Once again, we, we're growing here. We've taken on new staff, and every time I have a need, it's a quick call, and they make sure that they come over and help us with fit testing for masks. It's real critical to have a properly-fit mask, especially when you do our work. I have, I can't tell you the number of home care agencies throughout Connecticut that still cannot find ways to get their staff taken care of, and all I have to do is blink, and the Simsbury Fire Department meets my needs. I just can't thank you guys enough. Really, really amazing service.
Great reminder.
Thanks very much, Nancy. Really appreciate that, and that's what partnership is all about. So we thank you as well for everything you continually do for us. If you can come up with a needleless flu shot, that'd be great, but.
Listen, I've been told I'm a very good nurse. I give painless flu shots. Just let me know next time.
Very good.
All righty, Sarah, anything else from your end, or questions for Sarah?
Nothing from my end. The chief mentions the Simsbury Celebrates, and there's also going to be fireworks. It's from an undisclosed location. The committee does not want to disclose it because we do not want people, you know, gathering. So the three places to watch the fireworks from are the Henry James Parking Lot, the Simsbury High School Parking Lot, or the, the Simsbury Farms.
Plenty of, plenty of wide-open spaces to park your car and stay in your car and watch the fireworks, right?
And if you're close to, if your home is close to any one of those areas, you can actually probably do it from your home.
Beautiful. Okay. All right, thank you, Sarah. Mark Musaro, you've been patient and wonderful as always. How are you, sir? Any, any updates from the Eversource side?
Yeah, thanks. I want to thank Michael in, in town for, for the feedback over the last few wind events that we've had, and, you know, we had a pretty good blow over Monday, I would say, Sunday night, Monday. And I am pleasantly surprised that Simsbury really had no effect from that. Thumbs up, Michael. There was neighboring towns, Avon especially, got walloped pretty good. Avon especially got walloped pretty good, um, and Simsbury feared very well. Um, uh, we were ready to, to respond to Simsbury, obviously. Um, but, uh, you know, processes that have been updated, working on improvements, um, have been helping and move through, uh, these events uh, in, in a, in a much more, uh, clean fashion. Been trying to make sure I keep everyone up to date on information as to where we stand during these events, leading up during and, and then as we close out, uh, some of these, uh, storms. So, um, quite a bit, quite a bit, you know, happening there. Um, I also, you know, not storm related, but I just wanted to kind of piggyback on, on Kristen's comment about going into the winter for energy assistance. Um, there are a multitude of places to get information for energy efficiency things for residents and businesses through our website, through the Energize CT website. Um, the special payment terms for, uh, residential customers has been extended into February. So those that are, you know, finding themselves, um, short and need some extended payment terms, uh, we are well, uh, ready to respond to their, their needs and, and have them call our customer service center to help with those type of things. Um, and then also, you know, to, to kind of piggyback on Energize CT, um, you may or may not have seen in the news that the supply portion of your bill that's, uh, runs on a six-month cycle that we purchase, um, and it's a straight pass-through. We purchase for our customers that haven't chosen a supplier. Um, it increases every January. Uh, it's just the way that the generation supply works with natural gas, the increased cost for that during the winter months. Um, I would suggest anybody that, that, uh, is looking to save to go and take a look at Energize CT. They offer third-party, uh, supply rate information there and there's a possibility that you can find something that'll work for you, that'll save you some money. So, uh, take a look there and, uh, strongly encourage people to, to do that.
Good reminder. Appreciate that, Mark. Thank you. Any questions for Mark? Any additional items for the meeting this morning? Good. I appreciate everybody's time, attention, professionalism. Um, and you all worked phenomenally well together and, and as a, as a volunteer and as a resident of this community, um, it continues to be much appreciated by, by myself and, and many others. So, uh, I wish you all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Uh, stay safe, um, and we will see everybody in December.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
We are. Thank you so much, everyone.